What's the?
She went that one.
Accused him not knowing which way was up, so, you know.
Which way is it? Didn't see it yet.
Don't hit it too hard in case I tease you.
That's how I fixed my computer.
Jake, have gavel travel.
Just don't do it on your pad on your laptop.
Okay.
He gave the thumbs up.
Call to order the Stearns County Board meeting for January, or February 7th, 2023. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A roll call will show that all commissioners are present today. The first item we have is approval of the agenda. Could I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I move that, uh, I, uh, item four be removed from the consent agenda, and I'll move the consent agenda.
Okay, let's go with the, well, we'll do, we'll double up here. We'll just do the first, the regular agenda. Commissioner, are you moving the regular?
I'll move the regular agenda.
Okay, and a second, and a second by Commissioner Notch. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Next item is consent agenda. Commissioner Bertram.
Mr. Chairman, I'll ask to have item four pulled from the agenda, and I'll move the consent agenda with that removal.
Okay, I have a, a motion to approve the consent agenda, items one through fourteen, with the exception of item four.
I'll second that with a question.
Okay, a, and we have a second with a question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Commissioner Notch.
Just the, on number five, which is approved a solid waste hauler's license. How many, what is the, is there a fee for each hauler? Okay. Do you know how much?
It's on the fee schedule, I don't know whether it's on.
Oh, okay, all right, thanks.
Okay. Shelley, since you answered that question, do, do they have to double up on those fees, whether it's the municipality or the county? Do you know?
I'm unsure, I, I don't know how the cities do their license.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, uh, I think someone might know the answer to that, they do. I think it's around $500, and then, plus, there's a tri-county license, and municipals have licenses.
So they have at least three, four licensures?
Well, three for sure.
Okay. Good morning, Dr. Williams, I see you're on with us.
Good morning, hey, you guys look good in that room.
I like to drive, too.
Okay, all right, uh, we'll, we'll go on. Commissioner Bertram, you, what do you want to do with item number four?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Randy and I had a discussion on this, the, uh, carryover request. Oftentimes, uh, in the, in the past, when I served on boards, uh, people questioned about how you budgeted items, and then, if those items weren't expended, or if they couldn't be expended, then it got transferred to the next budget, and they, they would always ask, well, how does that work? I understand that, but I told Randy, I think it would be worth, uh, an explanation for the public to understand how that process works, and Randy agreed to explain that, so.
Randy?
Yeah, so this is something we do every year. Carryovers are typically capital items, or like an IT project, or something that's an ongoing project, and that's what's on the list today, so, um, rather than, and they weren't able to purchase it for various reasons, a lot of these are vehicles, they're hard to get, or they're looking into it and trying to make sure they're finding the right, um, the right thing they need. So, right, this moves the money to the next year. We do that rather than adding it to the next year's levy, right? So when we do the 24 levy, we don't want to have to re-levy for these things, so we allow them to carry it forward from 22 to 23 and finish their purchase, so.
And then, Mr. Chairman, one question that I had after Randy and I talked, and after I looked at the list, so, let's say there's a squad car fifty, or twenty-seven, or fifty-five thousand, and move it over to this year, now it's going to be sixty-five thousand because of inflation or whatever, then how does that get assumed?
We, we don't, this is not adding any money to this. If the costs are more than that, the department needs to find it in their budget, wherever they can. If not, then we, the Budget Committee will talk, and if there needs to be something that comes back to the board, we'll do that, so, so that we're not adding any additional costs, and the, and the, the first attempt needs to be made by the department to find it if the cost is higher than what, what it was.
And for vehicles, um, and for vehicles, it's also something where we're typically buying these off of state contracts, so the prices are typically fixed multiple years by the state, so it's not as if it's, um, just the market and, and by itself.
Got it, thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Steve and Randy, and again, uh, it's worth a public discussion of knowing how this goes, in my opinion, so thank you for doing that.
Mr. Chair, if I could just add one, one quick thing, is that we, this is just a small amount of unspent dollars. Most of our unspent dollars are going to be carried over, or not carried over, they'll be added to fund balance, and, and that's what we see occurring, uh, from the, from the 2000 to 22 budget, too. So this is, this is just a small amount of the unspent dollars.
Mr. Chairman, Mike, thank you for that, but it is 700,000, and in Spring Hill, that's a lot of money.
And, 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 Mr. Schifels, uh, I appreciate knowing that, too, because, uh, sometimes when departments are in, put in a position where they have to spend money, or they lose money, they find ways where they maybe are spending it that's not in the best interest, so I, I appreciate, you know, having that ability to be flexible.
Yeah, and Steve and I were talking before the meeting, we don't want departments to rush out just to spend their money, right? We, we want them to make wise choices, and so, I think by allowing them to do that, they're able to make the best decision.
Okay, okay, thank you. Then, uh, can we move item number?
Mr. Chair, I'll move item, uh, consent agenda, item four.
Got a motion to move item number four?
I'll second it.
And a second, any more discussion on this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, parks. Mr. Anderson.
Morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Ben Anderson, Stearns County Parks Director. I have, uh, two items on the agenda for you today. The first being item C1, can be found on packet pages 122 through 126. Uh, and this is regarding, uh, the request that the Board adopt the Minnesota DNR Fed Rec Trail Maintenance Grant Resolution. So the Park Department seeks a $35,000 grant from the Minnesota DNR Fed Rec Trail Grant Program. If this money is received, it'll be used to assist with crack filling the entire Lake Wobegon Trail, seal coating, and air patching between Albany and Avon, uh, which is approximately seven miles, and the Parks Department is proposing to provide a $35,000 match that will come from our operating budget. So on an annual basis, we budget about 55,000, uh, per trail maintenance within our current. What this would do, it was, it would bring that budget up to about 90,000 for us to spend, and we do, typically, in the past, we have applied for a $25,000 grant, uh, with rising costs, as we're all seeing, we anticipate that occurring again, so we've upped that request to 35,000. This isn't a guarantee that we'll get this money, it is a request, but we have been successful for, I believe, the past six or seven years now. So with that, I'd take any questions.
Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion, and I have a question. Uh, could you just talk a little bit about, um, our partners? Because we clearly have partners that, that assist with us with, with those trails.
Yeah, so the Wobegon Trail specifically, uh, so the DNR actually owns that trail corridor from St. Joe all the way out to Socks, the Socks Center area. Um, and we do get some cooperative assistance when we're replacing culverts, uh, to maintain the, the actual structure of the old rail bed through there. When it comes to maintaining and operating the actual trail surface, we have a 20-foot wide maintenance and operation easement to do that through them. It's a hundred-year lease for a dollar, essentially.
I've got a motion.
Mr. Chairman, um, a question, uh, fifty-fifty, this is a 50-50 split?
One-to-one.
One-to-one, and it's a state trail. I guess that kind of caught me off guard, um, why we're, or isn't it a state trail?
Commissioner Bertram, no, it is not a state trail. This, it's, it's very confusing, MinDOT just owns the corridor and rail bank. It's the Lake Wobegon Regional Trail, so it's not a state trail.
So what happens, Mr. Chairman, beyond, uh, into Todd County and, uh, out of the Stearns County portion of it?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Bertram, good question. So once it hits, it goes through Todd County, it actually turns into the Central Lakes Trail, the corridor that's still owned by MinDOT, but it does turn into the Central Lakes Trail. So there's 104 miles of contiguous trail from Wake Park all the way to Fergus Falls. But once you get out of Todd County is where it switches to the Central Lakes State Trail. Once you come into Todd County and then into Stearns County, it's the Lake Wobegon Regional Trail.
Because, Mr. Chairman, it would just kind of seem to me that it has a statewide implication, not a county implication. You know, if we would ask, the Lake Cronus Trail Committee would ask the county or the DNR to maintain that section, the city and the township, I think they would both tell us, well, no, it's a, it's a local trail. Rightfully so, and this is kind of a state trail, in my opinion.
It, it's operated as a county trail, it's, it's not a state-operated trail, and it's been that way since in 1998, when the trail first opened.
Because we had the same, Mr. Chairman, and we just had the conversation right before the meeting here with the Glacial Lakes Trail, now that Recorrie finished that section, and there's seven miles that are undeveloped now, that's been, I carried a bonding mill for that back in the eighties, and that's just been just sitting there, now we've got seven miles, and back in the day, the Todd County portion was sitting there undeveloped, uh, and Dave Simpkins, uh, God rest his soul, really pushed to finalize that, and God had finalized, but the same thing's going to happen with the Glacial Lakes Trail now, which again, is a state trail, but not technically, because Recorrie owns that part, and then the seven miles have to be completed, and then it goes into Wilmer. I don't know, we maybe, let's, you and I have a conversation about how we can maximize that, because the one-to-one match kind of caught me off guard, I guess.
Mr. Chair?
For parliamentary procedure, we need to have a second on that.
I'll second the motion for further discussion.
Mr. Clark.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Bertram. Yeah, you know, I mean, obviously, this is, these are pieces you worked on and I worked on. I could tell you in Lake Wobegon, when the expansion, and then the Recorrie Trail that I carried when I was in the Senate, the local, the localities all basically had to say, yes, we are in, we are going to have skin on the game, so we were able to get bonding money as a component of this. In some ways, it's kind of like transportation, where the feds might give you money upfront, but then the states expected, or the localities are expected, a lot of the time, or most of the time, or all of the time, to do the maintenance. So if we think about most, but not all of the trails as regional with state support, that might be another way of thinking about it.
Yeah, that's correct, and, uh, with the trails, we also have the municipalities involved as well. For example, with the Beaver Island Trail, St. Cloud has its portion. Once it gets out of St. Cloud, then we're responsible, uh, for the rest of it getting out towards Warner Lake area, so.
And, Mr. Chairman, I'd be curious, like the Willard Munger Trail, and those other types of trails that I perceive as being state trails, is that the same way there? You don't have to answer that now, but when we talk, we can, I guess if everybody's being treated the same, and I don't have a problem, but if the Willard Munger Trail is being, you know, maintained 80% by the state, then I'd have to ask why, but we can discuss that, thank you.
Commissioner Bertram, uh, in, in response to that, you know, the, the trail systems, everybody is very supportive. Most people are very supportive of the trails, but in putting these things together, it's sometimes been a group effort by a number of municipalities, so it's not very clean as far as who's got what, but, you know, where there was a push to complete, you know, the articulation of those, and, um, it, it goes from municipality to municipality to county to state, and we're just all trying to work together, hopefully, so. With that, I've got a motion and a, a second, anything further, Ben?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Bertram, just to clarify, in the one-to-one match, we are going to be spending at least probably 70 to 80, probably even closer to 90,000 on the seal coat, crack fill, and the air patching project. That's why we proposed the one-to-one, is because we will be easily spending 35,000, and that just makes our application that much stronger during that process. So that's the only reason for the one-to-one. I could write in just a 25% match, but we're still going to be spending that 30, at least 35,000, well over that, so that's why we put the one-to-one into it.
Okay. And, Mr. Chairman, do you have an engineer that figures out what should be seal coated, what should be fogged, or do you guys do that?
We do that within our departments, it's on about a five-year rotation. We have consulted with engine, with the engineering teams to come up with that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, and I was just going to say that, in my opinion, what this is, is leveraging the county dollars with matching dollars to really do twice as much, but only putting in half the money.
That's how I see it, too. Well, before I call the question, Ben, I know we had a problem, especially on that trail, with the trees, with the roots coming out, and, you know, leading to early degradation of the, of the trail. Now, we come up with a solution to, to remedy that? Are we, are we able to, to dig deeper or farther out within the right-of-way to curb that, do you know?
So we don't have 100% solution at this time, you know, we have tried some root severing right along the edge when we are reconstructing the trail. We're also, um, putting down, um, some chemicals that deter root growth from underneath the surface itself, and then we've also tried, uh, we put landscaping fabric in those areas as well. So, um, we're trying lots of different things, nothing's proven to be 100% effective, but we are seeing some positive results, especially in some of our newer reconstruction of trail.
Yeah, I know we like vegetation, and even at our own home, we plant a tree, but then it comes up through the driveway and it doesn't help, so, yeah. Well, with that, I'll go ahead and call the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion passes. Ben, you have another item?
Yes. Uh, the second item I have for you is item C2, can be found on packet pages 127 through 129, and this is just, uh, an update, uh, regarding the meeting with the Lassard-Sams Outdoor Heritage Council and the Gold Spring Property Acquisition, and some follow-up to some questions that were asked at that previous meeting. So, uh, Pheasants Forever, and I attended the LSUHC meeting, and, uh, we proposed the attached map. As you can see, it's a little bit different than what you saw, it included that primitive camping in that seven acres on that northwest corner. They approved that primitive camping, if we choose to put that in as a management, uh, tool up in that seven acres. In regards to like a walk-in primitive camping tenting area, that is something we could do as well, but I think on the management side of that, uh, we'd want to look at when we would want to have that available, just as, so we're not having potential interactions between hunters and the campers and things like that. So we might be looking at like June, July, and August, where that might be rentable, and then going after like January 1st or something for winter camping. So that is an allowable use. They also approved moving forward with, uh, limited hunting, that includes the archery hunting and hunting with fine shot only. Their only other comment was they wanted to make sure that there would be no other road development other in, other than in that seven-acre corner on the northwest side there, where we're proposing most of the amenities. And then it was also contingent upon that Pheasants Forever received the $500,000 donation, which is really our contingency as well, right? So, um, along with that, um, the limited hunting, uh, in regards to the limited hunting seasons to provide other recreational amenities, so in discussion with the LSUHC staff, this would require a management need, meaning that we would need to show a need for such limitations, and then discuss with the LSUHC staff, and then most likely, those proposed changes would have to go to the Lassard-Sams Outdoor Heritage Council for approval. We have to remember that one of the requirements of the, and expectations of the 1.9 million dollar grant funding is that it is open to public hunting and, and fishing. So they're, they didn't say no, um, we just need to have that consultation with them for that. As for next steps, uh, Pheasants Forever is working with the property owners to obtain the abstracts and start reviewing them for any concerns, uh, and will continue to work with Pheasants Forever to eliminate and mitigate any of those concerns that are found moving forward, uh, with this acquisition. So, if that, I'd take any questions.
Mr. Chairman, Ben, uh, with the primitive camping, um, addition, which I think is a great idea, I, obviously, you access it off of 49, where do they park? I don't see any parking identified.
So in that seven-acre parcel in that northwest corner is where all that parking would occur. So we develop that into, and we'd have, we'll sit down and we'll have to identify with the management plan where those amenities are going to fit, where they work best, how do we keep them separated, and all of that, so.
Ben, I had a couple of questions. First of all, as far as they're concerned about a, a, any other roads, we did then identify, though, on access to the south with another parking lot for the hunters, is that correct?
Correct.
And they were good with that?
Yep.
Okay, and then that, that wouldn't prohibit us from developing any trails, as far as, they're talking about roads for vehicles, correct?
Mode trails, correct, is what we're allowed, they're talking about, yeah, roads for vehicles.
Okay, and, and again, you did say they were fine with the, uh, fine shot and archery?
Correct, no gun deer hunting.
Okay, good. Other questions?
Mr. Chair, just, it's exciting. It's good to see it moving forward in a way that could be really beneficial to the people of the region.
Okay.
Thank you, Ben.
That was just information only, correct?
Right, I don't think it requires, uh, an action.
Okay, okay, Board members, we are moving right along, it says a break, but I don't think we need a break. Unless, Mr. Williams Meyer?
The, things like root control and, and so forth, uh, yeah, please bear in mind that our authority, uh, only extends to the right-of-way limit. There is always going to be, uh, because of the nature of nature, issues with adjacent, uh, greenery and root, uh, development, uh, growing into right-of-ways. And, uh, so it's going to be a, uh, constant issue, so there's a limit to what we can do in that regard, so. Well-intended, but, uh, we do have our limits.
Sometimes difficult to mess with Mother Naturely.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, well, then, let's go ahead, we'll move on to the next item, let's go with administration. Let's go with administration. Dr. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You can hear me okay?
Yep.
All right. Thanks. Yeah, there's two items under administration. The first one is just a little, I'd call it a board policy or a guideline as we represent ourselves with before the state legislator. Particularly this year, we seem to, we started the session much more active than we previously have. And I think in the last couple of years, we've actually been a little more active during the legislative session. And so sometimes there was, sometimes we wonder or don't have to make a decision of who should represent us. And this year, we got into some discussions as we were scheduling the meetings to talk about the local option sales tax. So I put together this, just this little guideline for the board to consider and what that would do, it would help the board chair and myself as we schedule meetings, give us some guidance about who should represent the county. And of course, we have a board chair that often will represent, but there's times when we want someone else along. And so this is suggesting that we will many times have two members of the board and sometimes that'd be chair, vice chair, but other times it would be, would be the commissioner that is represented by the legislator that we're meeting with and talks a little bit about making those choices. Anything we put together, I think is going to, we're not going to be able to follow it exactly because there's going to be commissioners that can't be there or don't want to be there and things like that. But at least we have a little bit of guidance with a tool such as this and so the board can consider this and talk about it. And if you want to adopt something, that would be, that would be good. And one of the things that, and I sent this out yesterday because I did make a couple of adjustments, one, I felt that we need to make it clear that there's going to be times when a commissioner can't or doesn't want to testify or meet with legislators. And the other, the other thing that's been happening fairly frequently the last few years is we have commissioners that get asked by other organizations, whether it's MICA or AMC or, you know, whoever, Highway Twenty-three Coalition, whoever might want someone to represent, a commissioner to represent that entity. Sometimes our commissioners get asked to do that and clearly want it, we want to make sure that, you know, the rest of the board isn't going to hinder that. We actually, we want that to happen. And so I felt like I could make that a little bit more clear in this revised document. So by that, I can try to answer questions. You guys, you board members can decide what you want to do.
Okay, Dr. Williams, so is my understanding, we've got the document here as far as the policy is concerned and we'll discuss a little bit about it, but we're not actually going to take any action on it today?
Well, Mr. Chair, I don't know why you couldn't or wouldn't.
Okay.
But you don't, you do not need to.
Okay. Well, perhaps it's going to be up to the board, but maybe giving it some time to digest too might be better to bring it up at the following meeting. So, but anyway, we, yeah, and I do believe we need some discussion on this because oftentimes we've got the right hand working and the left hand working and we got to make sure that one hand knows what the other hand is doing and we are all on the same page and united as a board, even though we may not agree when we approach policy with the legislature, we have to be united on that end. So, okay, with that, I'll open it up for discussion.
Well, Mr. Chairman, certainly is helpful for me because as I saw the last couple of weeks unfold and Mike asked me to be a part of one of the meetings, I'm confused at how it works or it's supposed to work. At the newly-elected AMC conference, I was asked by staff if I would be willing to testify on a particular item. And I said, well, I'd love to, but I said, I guess with the protocol, I'm not sure how this works. By default, I was named to the Public Safety Committee at AMC. So obviously, logistically, it would make sense that then if there was something public safety related, then as the representative of Stearns County Board to that committee, then I would be involved with that, but I may not be involved in transportation because Commissioner Persky is on that. And then the chair part of it is obviously every organization I ever worked with, the chair, even on the planning commission, the mayor of the city, you know, they were the spokesperson or the lead on how that those interactions were. So I guess I wasn't clear on that. And then, of course, common sense is you lobby your own legislators. You know, in my case, I have a good relationship with Senator Howe and Representative Amuth, obviously, so it makes sense that I would interact with them and Commissioner Notch with Representative Anderson and Senator Westrom and Terrell and Lee and, you know, Joe with Representative O'Driscoll and Terrell and Lee with the St. Cloud. So that makes sense to me of how it should or could work. And then, of course, we have relationships that would be helpful above and beyond that, that again, we kind of have to identify, in my opinion, before, you know, what I, the couple of emails I've seen and the phone calls I've seen is today is Tuesday, we're going to meet with somebody on Wednesday and those two people are going to meet. There's no discussion, at least, or either that or I missed out on it, of okay, here's the issue, here's who we think we need to meet with, what's the strategy to best meet that goal? So however we can facilitate that, I think would be, it's not just meeting with people, it's making it the most effective, in my opinion. So this is certainly helpful. I'm curious, Mr. Chairman, Mike, so we got, you did your initial draft, which I thought was good. Normally, when you have a draft of something, then we have a committee of the whole discussion to make up the markups, but there's a lot of markups. Where'd that come from, Mike?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Bertram, both those documents came from me. So, yeah, I just felt that there was a couple of clarifications that would perhaps make the guidelines better. And so I did those prior to this meeting, but I did both of these.
You slept on it, Mr. Chairman, then, Mike.
Yeah.
There you go.
There you go.
But it just seemed to make, I mean, the original draft, I thought, was pretty, little bit more specific, a little bit more. And then now your revision kind of gets back to making it a little bit less clear again, in my opinion, but it's a start, I guess. I'm surprised you haven't had something, but this is, I think, a good start.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, yeah, and even this year, we were probably fairly well following what we saw before here, which is why you got asked at one point. But some of these meetings ended up, actually, it was very efficient, but it would have made this implementing this guideline impossible because it ended up being, at one time, we met with three legislators, for example. And another one, we ended up with a meeting right after one meeting and then another one right after to meet with another legislator. So those are good examples of times when we just wouldn't be able to implement this exactly. So that's why I wanted to make sure that everybody understood that there's going to be variations of it. But at least this gives us a guideline. I think that, you know, I think that in the past, we've been, we've been in sync with one another. There hasn't been really any problem having a, having a message that is the same from everybody. We adopt our priorities. If we're, if we're going to have a meeting, we try to have some talking points or the group that's going to meet, you know, comes to an understanding kind of how we're going to represent the issue. So while it wasn't all down in writing, I think, I think we've done a good job with that.
And Mr. Chairman, Mike, from my perspective, if we can plan, you know, having a full-time job, having a family and being a commissioner, we need to plan, at least I need to plan, more than just the next day kind of a thing, unless it's, you know, urgency of a hearing, but some of these were kind of planned. And then I feel, everybody's got a different approach, but I always appreciated more if people met with me when I was in the district. It was more effective than having, you know, five hundred people coming in and out during the conversation. But again, once we'd established who should be talked to on what issue, then maybe allow the individual commissioner to see if they can, you know, make arrangements to meet with them in the district on a Saturday morning versus going down to St. Paul and having less attention and less time maybe with them. But again, to each our own when those decisions have to come up or whatever. But from my perspective, I need a little bit of time and then if we establish what needs to be done, then I would appreciate the input of being able to say, well, this is how I'd like to do it. Then if you want me to meet with them, you know, and then allow me to decide and each member how and where they want to meet with them.
Okay. Commissioner Clark?
Yeah, thank you for doing this, Mike. I think it does reflect what our practice in general has been, and I actually think the clarifications were helpful. Commissioner Bertram, you well-stated a number of topics. One thing you should anticipate is AMC or another entity will reach out to you when they think in the bigger scheme of things, you're the person and regardless of the topic. So don't be surprised if there's something like on a Highway Twenty-three thing or something. The example would be, I think Jody's in here, I've gotten drawn into the county speed limits, like we, our position as an association, both associations are, we want to keep it the way it is. We have a couple metro legislators that want to change that because of a particular street. And I got reached out to because it fit with the specific legislator that was carrying the bill last year. So we don't usually second-guess them. If it wasn't me, it would have probably been somebody from a different county, which is fine too. And I think one of the things for us to remember, and Mike, I appreciate you reminding all of us, is that if we are asked, that we are letting you know because then you at least can keep track of it. I mean, my practice also is, is if I'm getting talking points from somebody, that I'm also sending it to both Mike and to the person who's part of our department head, just to make sure there isn't any conflict or if we've got a better example. And then lastly, let's face it, every session has its own interesting things. So this session has been off to the craziest start and the reason why, my understanding is we were meeting with the people at the times, is it's almost like further into session when some of them aren't even home very much. So everything you're bringing up is well-taken and we just didn't work given a lot of necessarily great options. And then lastly, just to name it, we don't usually have a separate bill. We've got this big bill that we're still trying to figure out and that's why we all have to figure out our, our best dances to be the most effective as we possibly can. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. And Mr. Chairman, that's a good example on the transportation. That's what I was asked to, to potentially participate in. And I said, well, again, being new and not understanding the protocol, I would think because Commissioner Persky is on the AMC Transportation Policy Committee and the chair, I said, I don't know that it would be appropriate for me to be involved and I have to find, I have to check that out. So that's where I'm not clear on yet. So if that happens, Mike, that again, or it did happen, but I just didn't get involved with it. So they say something about transportation and I say, well, I'm not sure if I can do that. I need to check with the chair and the AMC policy, transportation policy. That's not the way.
No.
Mike, it'll work? I'm asking Mike, Commissioner Clark.
But the AMC is asking you, they've already been figuring that part out. And Mike, we don't have committees. We don't have committees.
So Mike, Mr. Chairman, I'm just, again, I just want clarification so I know what I should be doing.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioner, yeah, I think on, in that particular instance, you know, that entity thinks that you're going to be a good representative of the issue in general. Obviously, you're still a commissioner from Stearns County, but, and so I think at that point, you know, you notify those that you think should be notified and you just can plan on attending and testifying or going through that meeting.
Got it. Okay. That's helpful. Thank you.
I just want to have a couple of comments here and that is, first of all, I've got respect for everybody that sits on this dais and we all bring individual things to this board and expertise from a variety of areas and we should use that as a strength. And when we have the opportunity to, to use that, we should. But also part of leadership is, when you're a leader, is to allow others to lead as well. And when we rotate from chair to chair, that gives that person the opportunity to be the spokesperson for, for the county and they take, they take that on. So that while I'm conducting this meeting today, I'm not doing the crossword puzzle, okay, because I've got to make sure that I'm going through the agenda and making sure the gavel's hit at the right time. And so I'm a little bit better on my toes when I am chair. Likewise, with the issues going on within the county, I want to make sure that I'm going to be signing the papers so that, you know, everything is, is in order. So I know when we are all serving the chair, we take that on and we, and we take that responsibility. Likewise, when we go and testify, whether it be in Washington or in St. Paul or even maybe some local lobbying, we all have our individual strengths and connections to those folks that we perhaps can influence for the better of the county. Well, we want to make sure, again, we tip our hand and do the best we can for the county, but somehow there's got to be a gatekeeper that knows what's going on and that's where we maybe need to make sure we have better communication. So I appreciate anything that's going on that if, Dr. Williams should always know what that is so that it's a part of the county policy and that'll also just to allow the chair to know that it's going on because, again, they may be meeting with the same legislator and they maybe would have no idea that the discussion had taken place. So I, again, I'm looking forward to a good year. We've got some big challenges with the next item on the agenda and we need to be in sync and have good dialogue on that. So let's take a look at the document. If there's some things we can maybe improve on or want to talk about next time, we'll do so. Otherwise, we can move on unless anybody else has something else. Commissioner Notch?
No, I'm fine with that.
Lee, do you have anything? All right. Well, if not, then we'll go ahead, we'll move on to the next item. And that's setting that special meeting. Dr. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, commissioners, we received the final report from our consultants just last week. And so that, to me, was the time to establish a time that the board can have a, you know, a lengthy discussion if that's what necessary and kind of decide where it wants to go with, with next, next steps with this whole project. The board was able to meet with the consultants as they, as they were, as they prepared this report. And so you've, you know, you have a fairly good idea of what's in it, but now, now we have the whole report. And so suggesting that we have a special meeting, a work session on March fourteenth so the board can have it, have a discussion kind of about, you know, I don't, I don't intend to have the consultants there. We may end up with questions that we have to pass on to the consultants, but just, just a time for the board to discuss the project and kind of see, decide where we want to go with next steps.
Okay.
Hopefully, you all have received, you got the electronic copy, but we were making the paper copies for you as well and hopefully you receive those.
Okay.
Yeah, I got the hard copy yesterday.
Okay. Well, Dr. Williams, this is certainly a big lift for the county, this project. And that's a big lift literally for that document as well when I picked it up. And it's going to take me a little bit of time to digest it all. And so I did start and I have probably need more than one highlighter. So I did begin it, but yeah, there's going to come up a lot of questions and, you know, we're going to be moving this forward. I'm concerned a little bit about the timeline and as far as going to the legislature asking for the sales tax and not necessarily being ready to have a project. So that would be a concern that I would have is, is the timeline that we're actually looking on. So do we have a general timeline as far as actually concretely deciding when and what we have for a, for a project to propose?
Well, Mr. Chair, that's a good question and I know some feel like we might have the cart before the horse because we're before the legislator, but, you know, I think that no matter what we end up with a project, even if it's half the cost that's been suggested or less than that, I think, I think, I think we're in agreement that the way to pay for that is going to be through the sales tax. And so we really needed to start that process, even though we didn't have the final report from the consultants and any, of course, no, no final decisions. So if we are going to pursue the sales tax, if we do get approval from the legislature, we need to put it on a ballot. It could, it could be soon as this year, but we could put it on in two thousand and twenty-four as well. So I think we've got, we've got time to come to, come to some decisions, even if it ends up being, so we don't hit the two thousand and twenty-three election. I know everybody involved wants to move this forward, but as you suggest, it's a huge I know everybody involved wants to move this forward, but as you suggest, it's a huge project, and we need to carefully consider where we're going to go with it. I mean, we don't even know, we haven't even decided where we might build this, or how big it's going to be, those kinds of things. So, there is indeed a lot to digest and a lot to decide, and I don't think we should put a timeframe on that today, or even next week. We need to have this kind of initial discussion and get a feel for where the board wants to go.
And Dr. Williams, I would agree with that. That's why I'm asking about the timeline, because I think we would be rushing to try to get it in for 2023, and I, perhaps, we would be ready for 2024. That being said, then, that the legislation we request would allow us to keep it somewhat open-ended, so that we are ready to go when it's appropriate.
Mr. Chair, we, you know, we put that high-end dollar amount in the resolution, and so we wouldn't, I mean, we obviously, we wouldn't be able to go higher than that, but I believe that we can choose to certainly go less than what we've asked the legislator for permission to do. So, I think we've, if we get approval this session, I think we've left our options open. The law does say that we would take that to the voters within two years. So, that is a timeframe that we would need to follow.
Okay, that's good clarification.
Mr. Chairman.
Other board members?
Mr. Chairman, thank you for that, Mike. That was my understanding of the two years at the first meeting this came up, and I said I would support that sales tax initiative, with the understanding that even though if we got the approval, and we ended up not doing anything, we still had to get that in motion. I think a lot of us think that the jail definitely has to be replaced. I'm a little shocked, and thank you, Mike, for inviting me to that meeting in December before I was sworn in. That was certainly an eye-opener at that meeting, but I just thought, well, okay, I'm new, I'm coming in, they've been meeting on this seven, eight times a month, or a year, and to come to find that the board really only had heard one previous meeting to that. So, that's why I think the work session is really important, and who, I think, my personal opinion is, it should be just the board and the board staff and Randy only for that discussion. I would not think it's going to be productive to have that large group discussion that we had in December. So, I think we should clarify, or I would like clarification on who's going to be invited to that meeting, to make that meeting more productive. And I'm not sure, I guess it's a general discussion we have to have, who's going to decide that, but I would not be in favor of a large group like met in December for the discussion that we're going to have to have.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Bertram, I do not anticipate having our consultants there. We have a number of staff that are stakeholders in this project, in this decision, and I'm sure that, so some of those members of that committee will want to be present, but I don't anticipate making it a meeting of that committee, kind of like we did at the last time. This would be a board meeting, and those stakeholders obviously can be present. It's a public meeting, and it might be good to have some of them there if you do have questions. So, that was, that was my intent, if, that was my intent.
Mr. Chairman, Mike, the discussion is what I'm most interested in. Certainly, as you say, it's a public meeting, but I don't want to get, I don't think it would serve us well as a board to be distracted with these outside conversations like happened at the meeting in December, and I appreciate that you're saying it's not going to be that big of a board meeting discussion. So, certainly don't have a problem with members, players being at the meeting, but I think the five of us really have to have the, have the discussion on where we really want this to go. At some point, I'd like to have somebody tell me what the study costs, and you don't have to do that now, but I can't imagine. And well, the one concern, when Sheriff Sika and I toured the jail, the one thing I heard Sheriff say several times is, well, this was designed wrong, and this should have been done differently. And I looked at him both the third time, and I said, and the unfortunate thing is, we're going to spend hundreds of millions of dollars, and the same thing's going to happen all over again. You know, my history with architects and engineers and consultants are, you know, they're great at doing what the big picture stuff, then when it comes home to roost, they're long gone, and no one's accountable for, so that's why I think we really, really have to be hands-on, the sheriff and his staff, you know, who's going to use it. Sometimes we design offices, and don't ask the people that are really going to be using the offices, how would you like it designed? And so, I think, again, it's not our job, and yet we all know that that has the potential happening, that these engineers and architects and consultants aren't going to be as concerned about it as the sheriff's staff, or us, or, you know, the general public. So, but I'm glad that it's going to be a more, a smaller group discussion with staff available than if we do have questions.
Commissioner Lynch, mayor?
Yeah, can you live with this, Jeff? If the discussion is just among us, however, just like this experience we're having right now, others can watch? Is that something you can live with?
Absolutely, and be available, Mr. Chairman, as Mike said, absolutely. But, I don't want the discussion, my concern, as one member, would be that the discussion is led by others. Because at the end of the day, us five are going to have to make the decision, and us five are going to, you know, have the consequences of making that decision, not the outside group. So, that's my sensitive, but certainly, it's a public meeting, they can listen. If we have questions, we can ask them, but I'd really prefer to have the five of us have the deeper discussion. Five of us, and then, of course, Randy, and Mike, and Steve, you know, because again, that's our inside group.
Okay. Anyone else?
Okay. Mr. Chair, the only thing I would say is, you know, we can have that discussion, but we technically, in my opinion, we definitely need some of them people there, because we don't know the inner workings, you know, because to make, whether it's a $50 million decision, 150 million, or 300 million, the people that are involved can also give us the insight to make sure we don't make some of the same mistakes. And face it, time goes on, things change, you know, attitudes change, well, then what you created, you know, is outdated. So.
And Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Notch, I don't disagree. However, again, I'm shocked that there's only been two board discussion meetings on this, and we're at $320 million. And I thought, well, okay, I'm the new guy, I must have missed some of these meetings. Well, the reality is, that was led, Commissioner Notch, not by commissioners. That was led by, again, what I consider to be the outside, you know, to use, I like using analogies, the boys, Jacob Mitchell loved to make decisions on doing things certain ways, but I always have to remind them, if we're doing it as a family, I'm writing the check, and so I appreciate your input, but at the end of the day, you know, we have to pay for it. So, that's my concern. So, I certainly welcome that, but I think because of too many larger discussions, and not having direct board involvement, in my opinion, it's gotten maybe a little bit out of hand.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Bertram, but, you know, in my opinion, this is how it gets created. You know, now, we know the extent of the ask, and now, to me, this is, okay, now we have to dive in and tear this thing apart and come up, you know, build the thing the way we think it should be built. That's where I'm going. And my concern is having it on a referendum. It's something you also have to take back to the public and get public approval. So, we can all be fine with what we want, but we've seen many school bond issues come out, where we think we have the best, but the public will not support it. And I want to have a proposal that the public will pass when we bring it out, and we should be able to market that and sell that, and it should speak for itself. That's my concern.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Yep, go ahead, Mike.
I just want to state that I don't anticipate the board making any decisions at this next meeting. I anticipate that you're going to, you're going to have a number of questions that we'll have to get answered, maybe won't be able to get them all answered at that particular meeting, and we'll be having more meetings before you come to any decisions. The committee that helped guide this planning process, I was a part of it and asked questions all the way, if you're trying to make this thing get smaller. So, I know that's, that's questions that the board's going to have, too. But I don't anticipate any decisions coming out of this March meeting by any means.
Okay. Commissioner Notch?
Oh, yes, Mr. Chair, I was going to make a motion to set March 14th at 11 as the date for special meeting.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion in a second to set that date for our meeting. Any further discussion on it? If not, I'll call the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. That takes care of business on the regular agenda. We'll now move over to issues by Commissioner. Lee, I'm going to start down on your end.
I have nothing.
Now, how about an update on the Huskies, anything?
Well, the, they had two ties this weekend, and the way, the way, the, the way it works is, that didn't harm them much.
Okay, one suit, but two ties.
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Bertram?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I think Mike looks as good far away as he does right up front, so Mike, for whatever that's worth, hope everything's going well.
Yeah, I'm surprised the snow melted in front of the admin building.
Yeah, and I can't believe it either. The, and the, I'm starting to attend my committee meetings, and with Steve's continuous help of identifying where they're meeting, when they're meeting, you know, who the contact is, that's all being sorted through, so that certainly is a learning process. And lastly, I want to say thank you to Bishop Donald Kettler, who's leaving the St. Cloud Diocese. My family and I attended the mass on Sunday, his farewell mass. He was a wonderful bishop. The religious community certainly helps guide the county, helps guide the community of all denominations, and I think, I want to especially note, to say thank you to Bishop Kettler, and to also extend a welcome to Bishop-elect Patrick Neary on his upcoming installation and ordination. So, it's a big, big deal for the St. Cloud Diocese, and for the Stearns County, and 16 other counties. So, just want to say goodbye to Bishop Kettler, and welcome Bishop-elect Neary.
But he's Irish. God, that's not going to work.
Hadaway, and Marty will love him.
Carol?
Well, I think you'll probably be speaking about this next week, so I'll leave that one to you. Mike, I wasn't sure if you wanted to say anything about the fact that there's a tax committee having the county, the CPA, hearing this coming week, because it may be a time that you're going to say to all of us, make sure you're going back to our members, at least if we've got somebody that's on that committee.
Commissioner Clark?
It's probably the biggest bill out there besides our, our bill.
Good.
Yes, I don't, I don't have the schedule, and I don't know if anybody's been asked to testify from Stearns County. I do know that Mr. Massman from MICA has reached out to the administrators for some information to help them with that testimony, and I did respond to that yesterday. So, I know, I know they're preparing for it, as is AMC.
Yeah, and Mr. Chair, I think, Dr. Williams, I don't know that anybody from our county's been asked to testify, but they are asking for commissioners, if possible, if they're in the area, to attend, so that the House sees unified support.
Commissioner Notch?
I was just going to bring up the AMC Legislative Conference is, what, February 22nd, 23rd? So, yeah, I'm assuming somebody from the county would register any of us that plan to attend? Yeah, other than that, I don't have anything, Mr. Chair.
Clarify our earlier discussion. So, you are going to that?
To the AMC Legislative Conference.
I'm planning on.
Oh.
Hopefully you are.
Okay, great, we got somebody there.
Well, I believe.
Yep.
I believe you're going on another trip, too, this weekend.
Yes.
Yeah, Commissioner Clark, Commissioner Notch, and myself are going to DC this next week with the NACO conference, which is always a good conference, getting updated on the national side of the counties, but also an opportunity for us to bring our concerns to our legislators that are out there, and looking forward to that, and also with our fellow commissioners across the state, and, you know, sometimes you have asks out there for funds, but that doesn't necessarily happen. And when you have that face-to-face contact, that oftentimes is the thing that puts us over the edge, that actually makes those things happen. So, we will be out there this next weekend through Tuesday, so.
Mr. Chair, may I offer up, maybe? Would the board like to go around and just state what AMC Policy Committee they're on, and then if they're also on a NACO committee?
We, yeah, we could, we could, we could do that, and we'll, we'll close with that. I just, I want to just echo to Commissioner Bertram's comments about Bishop Kettler. Again, too, he was a very strong religious leader, but also, he did wonderful things, I think, for the Stearns County community, and we appreciate that service that he had given us. So, yeah, we, let's take a look at what folks are doing on that AMC board. Lee, what are you working on?
Nothing.
Oh.
No, the, with this last go-around, the net result was, I'm no longer on the MICA board, and I want to thank Steve for taking that on. I'm less inclined than I am in the past to get involved in committees and relationships that involve travel, although that hasn't been, that it's turning out to not be the issue I thought it was. So, I'll be making myself available, as I have in the past, for those efforts that require more travel. So, that's where I'm at. Jeff?
Mr. Chairman, again, with Steve helping lead me, my understanding is, I'm on the public safety, and I did attend that at the AMC Annual Conference in December, even though I wasn't officially sworn in yet. But, again, do I understand this right? They would contact me, I don't, I'm not contacting them, correct? I mean, I haven't heard nothing since the annual meeting, but public safety would be my, and then, the other thing is, oh, now, MICA, my understanding is that I'm the alternate to Steve, which I asked Steve, the other Steve, yesterday, on the committees that I'm an alternate on, just to understand the protocol, if the regular member can't make it, I would assume in due time, I'm notified. You know, like if you can't make, Planning Commissioner, or Steve can't make the MICA meeting, then I'm notified, you know, far enough ahead of time that we can plan for that. And again, help me with this, everybody that I understand. Don't assume that I know that I'm supposed to go someplace.
Yep.
If I'm not someplace I'm supposed to be at, it's because somebody didn't tell me. So, thank you.
Well, one destination comes to mind, but I'll share that with you later.
Carol?
I have a feeling I know that.
For AMC, I, I'm our representative to the Health and Human Services Committee, and I currently serve as chair, and I got voted by the AMC Board to be a NACO delegate to that board, so I will be cycling off of that. I also am chair currently of the NACO Telecommunications and Technology Committee, and so get to work a lot on broadband and cybersecurity together with others, right? I mean, because we've got lots of good voices here. One thing, too, Jeff, for you to consider is, you just need to let Julie know if there's a policy steering committee that you're interested in on, for NACO, because the state associations are the ones that send that in, and you probably had heard that at orientation. We just can't have more than two people from one county on a committee, and not more than eight from a state. I've gotten to serve actually on EELU, the Energy, Environment, and Land Use, and on the Human Services, too, so we could rotate around, but that's worked out with them.
Steve?
Okay, so on AMC, I'm on the Environment and Natural Resources Committee, and then also, now for NACO, I'm on the Ag and Rural Affairs Committee. So, and then, I took Lee's spot on MICA, so.
Yeah, and I serve on AMC, which is Association of Minnesota Counties, on Transportation Committee, and then on the NACO Board, I'm also a member on the Transportation Board as well. And for the public, those are not just the other things that we do. And coming in, Commissioner Bertram, learned that there are a good number of committees that you're placed on, that you would, maybe were not aware of before you became a county commissioner. So, throughout the month, or throughout the year, we may be involved in as many as 10 to 15 different committees to some extent. So, it's not just two meetings a month. All these folks that are here at the diocese are very much engaged with the community at a local state, and even a a local, state, and even a federal level, so.
Well, Mr. Chairman, two things I've learned in the month is that commissioners love going to meetings, and all the handicap spots are taken, no matter which AMC meeting you go to, because the average age is 75 of commissioners across the state. So those are two things I've learned so far. And I will become involved with NACO, but right now, my first, my four, you know, I want to get my hands around this, and my attention to the district will always come first. AMC is secondary, NACO will probably be a third, but certainly will get involved with my good friend Mary Jo, Commissioner Mary Jo McGoyor becoming president next year. I certainly will be active and involved with NACO, but I'm taking baby steps into getting my arms around everything.
And I just might add that, Commissioner Bertram, it seems whether it's at the local level or at the national level, gray seems to be the choice of color for county commissioners. I don't know why that is, but it seems to be the choice, so.
It maybe didn't start out that way.
No.
And Mr. Chair, apparently, there are 20-something that are trying to get my beautiful color in there. I don't know why, you would want to just wait.
All right, if there's nothing else, we'll adjourn this meeting.
Thank you.